Paul, you ready? You ready, Paul? Okay, Candy, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. It's five o'clock. Let's call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, July 18th, 2022 to order. Candy, roll call, please.
Beshin.
Here.
Beal.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
And Wunch.
Here.
Okay, we'll go to three. Approval of July 11th, 2022 Village Board Meeting Minutes. I'll take a motion in a second. Mike and Amanda, any discussion by anybody? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Public appearances, items are for discussion, possible action, public comment. This is part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody see anything? Okay, we'll go on to five. Proclamations and announcements. Five A is upcoming meetings and events. That was in our packet. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, because, yeah, Carleen?
Is this the time I should tell you when we're gone for two months?
What? You can, sure, go ahead. Two months.
I'm gone for two months.
Two months?
Yeah, for, um, yeah, maybe that's, maybe we don't want the whole.
Too late for that.
You, sorry.
Somebody's staying in my house, so it's not like my house will be empty, but I would be there.
Okay.
Um, yeah. So, um, I'll be there tomorrow and we're leaving on Thursday.
Okay.
And so be back end of September.
Okay, all right.
Randy, I have something to add too.
Yeah.
Because it's not in the packet here. Just the Oregon Transportation Committee is going to have their first meeting Wednesday, August 3rd at 5:00 PM in the Village Boardroom here.
Okay, perfect, great. Okay. All right, we'll go to, yep, one more thing?
The DEI Committee will meet, we're going to meet via Zoom while I'm away.
Okay.
And I will be meeting with the Library Board, assuming they are, we can figure out how I can call it.
Yeah, we'll use the Senior Senator teleconference system.
Yeah, I just, there's not a way to participate in this meeting.
Okay, great.
Yes, thank you.
By phone, but.
All right, we'll go to six. Report of Village Officers. Items are for discussion, possible action. A is Village Administrative Report. That was in our package from Martin. Anybody have any questions or comments for that? Seeing none, we'll go to six B. Director of Public Works Report, Yahara Winds, 2021 Annual Report. Jeff, I think that's going to be you, right?
It is. I just, if anyone has any questions on it, it's something we invest in annually. We have been very strong, strong partners with Yahara Winds for, since its inception and prior even when it was just a pilot project. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We just always put the annual report in the board, just to let you know what's going on with Winds.
Jeff, one thing I did notice, they didn't have, under villages, they didn't have us listed.
Right, we're, no, we're, we're not the, we're not listed as a village. If you look under, we're actually listed as an other.
Oh, other.
Because, because, we're under others, so we're under Village of Oregon Wastewater Treatment.
I see it, thank you. Okay. Any questions for Jeff on the report? Anybody? Okay. We can go to six C, which is Assistant Director of Public Works Report on Fire Hydrant Painting Effort. That was in our packet too, a memo from Lauren. I don't know, do we need to, Jeff, do we need to say anything about that? It was pretty.
I just wanted to know people, I asked her to put this in just because I wanted to know if people had noticed all the nice red hydrants in the village.
Yeah.
We had some really pretty sad looking hydrants and we've been wanting to get some painted for a long time, so we were able to get 339 of the, I think it was 630 painted this year.
Oh, great.
And they're really sharp and.
My dogs have noticed most of them.
Yeah, that's what the yellow is around the bottom of that one. But no, I think it, it just looks sharp.
I have noticed, Jeff, that's, I'll see one nice shiny one and then next, it's not done. You must have a method to the madness.
There was, there was a ranking, so when we did hydrant flushing earlier this year, there was a ranking that they did, that the staff did, entered it every one when we were doing it on the tablets. And that's how Lauren was able to determine which ones we were prioritizing.
So our hope is to have the rest of them next year, maybe? Or do you think it'll be a couple of years?
Either next year or the next two years.
Okay.
But I'm hoping the next year.
Okay.
Yep, and there was, there was some, I did see some comments one time was like, why are we spending money on hydrants when we could be doing it on something else? Just a reminder, this comes out of the water utility, which is a completely separate fund than our general fund and our operating fund.
Anybody questions or comments? They are pretty.
Yeah, they're nice.
They look good.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, we can go to D, which is Village Department Head, Staff, Consultant, Comments? Anything? Jennifer, Rachel, or Elise?
Randy, I'll just say that we're starting, uh, starting next, a week from today, is the planned shutdown of the intersection at Janesville and Perry Parkway. It'll be shut down for north and south traffic. It'll be one lane each direction on Janesville or flagged if it has to be less than one lane or less than two lanes. So, and that's anticipated about 30 days.
Okay, all right.
I would just add in case.
Yeah.
Not, it's not directly, but Highway 14 is closed now at Highway 92.
Yeah.
So that's something to be aware of.
Okay, good.
Wall Street's quite busy.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, let's, let's go to six E, which is Village Board Comments. Anybody on the board have comments tonight? All right, no? Okay. We can go to seven. Communication with Slaney's Business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Seven A is approval of vouchers in the amount of $6,517.50. If we can have a motion in a second, we'll get it on the table. Phil and Carleen? All right, who's got some, anybody have any questions? There wasn't that, wasn't too many, but anybody questions? Amanda's got one.
Why so low? Never seen this low amount of voucher.
Well, I think because we met last week, maybe?
Yeah, we just had a meeting last week, so.
Well, but even so, we've done that before and it's, I, I was just surprised.
I've got a stack that are waiting for approval, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll get us back.
But we're still spending money.
All right, anybody else, any other questions? All right, so let's take a voice. Candy, a voice vote?
Beal.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Wunch.
Yes.
Glish.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Beshin.
Yes.
And Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to seven B, which is termination of Task Order Number Six dated September 18th, 2017, and approval of Task Order Number 2022-01. Agreement for Professional Services, Rupert Milky Incorporated for Engineering Services, related to drilling a well number six. Staff is recommending that we approve as presented. Jeff, do we need to say anything?
Only if there's questions. I just, I just want to say that well six has kind of been an ongoing project for quite a long time. We actually originally started the plan to be drilling it down, um, right next to Peterson Trail, but this is before Peterson Trail was even in concept. We were going to drill and we own land right adjacent to the Presbyterian Church there in Highlands and Netherwood. And with their development plan, we've moved it up into where would be Phase Three. It's actually a better location for us, but it just takes time. These, these projects takes time. It's taken a lot more, um, work with our hydrogeology, geology consultant, Collier, and, um, and obviously over five years, rates change and everything like that. So this is just kind of a cleanup thing. This is funded through the water utility.
Okay, yeah, Mike and Carleen?
Why is bid solicitation and evaluation included in the task order when the bid's already been awarded to municipal well and pump?
We're just cleaning things up for where they were and where they are. So this, this is actually going to cover stuff that's already been done.
Okay, so we're paying for backwork?
Correct.
Okay.
Carleen?
Um, I just, my, my question is about when you moved it, did you just flip properties with the developer and they got the village property and you, we got a different one? Or how did that work?
Yes and no. I mean, yes, I mean, in a matter of words, yes. It wasn't an equal square foot by square foot type of thing. When we acquired, when we were originally planning on drilling well number six, we took a best guess estimate and even went a little higher and bought more land than we thought we would need for the well site. But when Highlands and Netherwood came in, they had a different development plan. We actually found out that some of the drain fields in that area, because that's right along Netherwood Road, could conflict with our well siting. And so it kind of was a benefit for all. But we're on a nice sized lot up, kind of up the hill and, uh, excuse me, what you're going to see when we go to construct this wellhouse is we're actually probably going to construct it to look almost exactly like a home. So it should, we, we want it to kind of not look industrial or municipal as much as it, you know, blend into the neighborhood.
Great, thanks.
Fake dog out in the front yard and that kind of stuff.
Anybody else? All right, we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve. Carleen, make a motion. And Amanda, any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Seven, seven C is Task Order Number 15 for Richards Road Lift Station Assessment for not to exceed cost of $9,500. And Task Order Number 16 for Water Ordinance Review for not to exceed cost of $4,000 with Town and Country Engineering Incorporated. Staff is recommending approve as presented. That was stuff in our packet. Anybody want to ask questions or otherwise I'll entertain a motion? Phil, okay, give him a second. Jenna? All right, anybody, any, any questions or discussion? Okay. See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
Seven D is authorized submission of grant application to Dane County Cultural Art Affairs, Commission for Use Towards Public Art. I can talk about this one. They, they do a, a little grant thing twice a year. This one is a small one, again, $5,000. We've gotten grants from them before. We got one from the pump house then a couple of years ago. So I, I'm, I'm going to write it and we'll see, we'll see what happens, just for public art. So we just want to make sure that the, the board is okay with us doing that. Martin will submit it. Um, Martin, you want to, you have a motion? Second, let's have a motion second so we get it. Mike and Carleen, anybody questions? Okay, yeah.
Has, has it been earmarked at all or is it, it's a public art? And then would people in the village be able to apply to, to actually use some of that money?
It, it's going into our public art kind of program type thing and we're, we're working out those details in terms of how that's going to work yet. So this will just add to the coffers that we have, yeah, to the pot, to kitty, yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then we'll go to E, which is authorized hiring. Now, see if I kill this, Umberto?
Umberto.
Arias?
Arias Morales.
Upon completion of acceptable background evaluation for full-time janitor position starting at $19 an hour, increasing to $20 an hour following an acceptable six-month review conducted by the Director of Public Works. Recommendation is to approve as presented. Do we want to make a motion? Jenna and, and Derek, I'll take Derek. Any discussion, anybody? Okay, he, he's been our, kind of our, our guy.
He's, he's been working with Environment Control for the last four years? Four and a half years? And has been doing a really great job, so.
Okay.
He'll be terminating his employment with them. We'll be terminating the contract that we have with them and he'll, he'll come to work with us. And I will say I have received the, the background check and everything and discussed it with Martin and everything, so.
And then for him, that comes with benefits too?
Correct.
Good for him.
Yep.
So, all right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll go to eight, Reports of Committees. Items are for discussion, possible action. Eight A is Plan Commission, Ordinance Number 2211, Ordinance Adopting the Zoning Map Amendment to Rezone Parcel Number 16505090236021-1. Lot Two Certified Survey Map Numbers 16015 From Rural Holding to Institutional Zoning, and it's the future library site. Staff recommendation is to, we'll suspend the rules, waive the first and second readings. So why don't we do that first if we want to waive the, okay? Phil, and then I saw Carleen saying, so this is to waive the, the first and second readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we can take the, a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Carleen and Amanda, any discussion on this? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Eight two, or eight A two, Ordinance Number 22-12, Ordinance Changing the Zoning Classification of Property Located at 201 Concord Drive, Plan Business to Plan Development District. Is it Bodie How? Is that how you say it? Bodie How Brewing Company, which has been before us. Staff recommendation is, again, we'll motion to suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings of the ordinance, and then we'll do the ordinance. So if we can get a motion in a second, Amanda, to waive the first and second?
Did I see it?
Somebody, all right, Derek, okay? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and then we'll take a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. All right, Amanda and Derek, again? Any discussion on this one? Yeah, Mike?
Why the flexibility for 4.6-foot candles on the eastern edge of the property?
So our lighting ordinance requires usually just half a foot candle to be crossing a property line. Where they are going to be a bit brighter is on the eastern property line along the wetlands that the village owns, that's never going to be developed. That's just to make sure that the, the backside with the, um, the drive-through is well lit, especially in the winter. People are coming in in the morning time, it's still being pretty dark there as well. But that was a, a point that our planning commission discussed and they were comfortable with that, given that it's backing up to village property. There's not going to be any residential or anything that way. And there is landscaping, believe, planned along that side.
So how far will that light extend into the wetlands?
I'm not sure, but all of the lighting that's required is downcast, so it's not going to be, you know, a flood lamp. It's not shiny up into the sky, so it would be a.
Pull up the ISO.
Yeah.
The LED fixtures really bleed off very, very quickly.
Yeah, I think it's right there.
Well, yeah, so you can see here, see how it's like four, almost four-foot candles here right at the property line, 3.47. By the time it gets no more than 25 feet out in there, it's at 0.0.
Okay.
They bleed out super quick. You can see it's still zero to almost 0.02 all the way around, even before it gets to the street out here.
Okay.
All right, Mike, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Carleen?
So I'm looking at these and I don't see any specific design yet on the pump track. Is that right? I'm not seeing that.
It's a separate parcel, yeah.
Okay, and so I'm assuming, is that going to be the light at night as well?
We haven't seen any plans for the pump track.
Okay.
That'll come to us.
It's just a question.
Yeah. Good question. Anybody else? Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Eight, eight B is Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. Carleen, will you can speak to this?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that. And I have here, these minutes, just so you know, have not been approved by the committee yet because we haven't met again, but we did want to make sure that folks knew that at the last meeting at the beginning of this month on July 7th, we did have a discussion about DEI training and the committee as a whole. Let me back up just a little bit. We decided that we wanted to make decisions by consensus, so we don't, we're not voting on these. We're having conversations about them and concerns and, and voicing those. And then if there are concerns, if somebody is not supportive of a decision that the majority of folks wants, then they, you know, they have, we have determined that they will go with it if that's the case. Now, that said, um, there were no objections to this decision and four out of the five folks on the committee were, were very much in support, uh, four out of the five who were in attendance. Neither of the, uh, the students could be there. One was in DC for a trip and the other was doing something else school-related. So these were, there weren't, and one of those students did send in lots of commentary on what her thought. So the, the, the committee decided to recommend the Nehemiah proposal. There are, were several members of the committee, including myself, who have experience with Nehemiah and have taken the Black History for a New Day class. And I actually was a facilitator. I took it and then I was a facilitator twice and have done some volunteering with Nehemiah as I think a couple of other members of the board have. And you can see that there were several things that made them more appealing. They, the, the history class, for one thing, also the, their community approach, that they are already working with the Oregon School District. And so we felt like that was a nice overlapping collaboration. And also that they explicitly referenced police training. We did have some questions and I spoke a little bit with Candy about this. I'm not sure if these are things that the committee should do or that we should ask staff to do or if staff already has this information. So the questions were, has Nehemiah worked with any other villages or towns in our area? And if so, do we know anything about that experience? They referred to nine sessions, but they don't say what time span that would cover. And so that was another question, like, would this be kind of like over the nine months of the school year kind of thing? So there wasn't any specifics around that. And how will those courses be delivered? We wondered if Nehemiah surveys participants regarding any kind of previous training that they might have had? And also do they have a pre and post measure to determine if, the readiness of folks for, for a training? And then any kind of impact that the training might have had? And then it would be nice to know, like, what is their definition of community-wide training? So who in the community would be invited to the training and who would determine who those community members are? So those are questions that we had and, um, so I guess that's, that's information that I need to be able to take back to the committee.
So Carleen, you, you need that for us to move forward in terms of, you want to get these answered?
I guess it's two questions.
Yeah.
Is this something that the committee should investigate? Is this, are there, is there information that we have? These were all wonderings that the committee had based on the proposals that were, the two proposals that we had. The committee would, did recommend Nehemiah based on the, the reasons that I said before, but that wasn't without some wonderings still. So, um, and I, I suppose this would be, could be something that we say to Nehemiah, yes, we'd like to do this training with you and we have these questions. Could you help us with the answers? And it could be as simple as that. So I just, I'm putting it, this is the first time I've done this, so I'm putting out, like, what's the next, what is the best next step? Is that, who, who originally talked with Nehemiah and got these proposals? As I recall, this was like my first meeting as a new board member this, or second, Derek, maybe our second meeting as new board members just came up.
I think it was a little later than that even, I think it was.
It was like early.
It was early on, but not, I mean, it was.
Yeah, it was like last June. And so, I don't know, what's the next step?
Well, I think you got a couple of options. I think if the board is, is good with the Nehemiah recommendation, you know, the village staff can investigate these questions if you want. Otherwise, the DEI Committee could act as a steering committee in asking these questions and refining the scope of services. I guess, you know, wherever the board prefers at this stage.
Yeah, Amanda?
Were the, are there any volunteers on your committee that would said they'd be willing to call Nehemiah and get answers to those questions or?
Well, we didn't, we really just didn't know if that is something that we do, if we're authorized to do that or not. So that was sort of that question. Are we authorized to do that? Is that something that we say, okay, these are the recommendations? And is it something that staff would normally do? We, I, I couldn't answer that question.
I think you're authorized.
Yeah, Phil, and then Mike.
I think you said, Carleen, that your group was recommending this organization.
Correct.
However, um, is that subject to their answers to these questions?
Um, no, it's things that we wondered about. So when you look at their proposals, both the proposals are, are really scant. They don't answer either one of them, these questions.
Okay.
And so these were things that, okay, if we're going to hire these folks, these are the things that we wonder about. And so, um, and would like more information and would think that, you know, the board and, and the other staff would want more information about some of these things. I mean, it's just, do we just say, yeah, we want you to train us? And then we don't get these questions answered, so.
Yeah. Mike, and then we'll go back to Phil.
Yeah, I think the board should authorize the DEI Committee to engage with Nehemiah on getting these questions answered. And as far as I'm concerned, we can authorize them to approve the contract with, with Nehemiah once you have your answers. My concern would be if we have village staff do it, that this will become pretty circuitous. They will ask a set of questions. You will get the answers. You will have follow-on questions. They will ask a set of questions, you will get the answers, you will have follow-on questions, which in turn will delay this process way longer than it's already been delayed, which is too long.
Yeah, so the committee, when it was formed, was said recommendations, you know, to the board. So, you know, with that authorization, where, so that, yeah.
So I guess my thought would be that you as the trustee representative to the DEI committee and staff could meet with Nehemiah to figure out the scope of work and discuss what should be in the contract and not, and before it comes to the board, and then the board can go to approve it. But we can maybe vote to move forward with that one.
Yeah, Phil, Phil had something.
Jenna and Mike covered by it.
Okay, I mean, I think it makes sense for the committee to
Yep.
meet with them, and you guys will be comfortable with that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
We just were not clear whether we were authorized to do that or not, because it doesn't say
Yeah.
that in our scope of work.
Yeah.
It says make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, yeah, Jenna.
So then can I make a motion to have the DEI committee and staff work with Nehemiah to move forward on equity and inclusion training for Village Board and Village Staff?
Second.
Second?
I'm sorry, I'm still not clear on something then, based upon that motion. Basically, we're, is the diversity committee saying that Nehemiah is going to do the work?
Our recommendation is that Nehemiah be the entity that is hired to do the work, but we also wanted to know these other things.
Great, I'm clear now, thank you for, thanks, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? So are we all clear as to what's, Jenna, why don't you just kind of restate what your
I will try to remember.
Just so we, we have it clear. Yeah.
A motion to approve the DEI committee and staff to move forward with a proposal from Nehemiah for diversity, equity, and inclusion training for Village, the Village Board and Village Staff.
Okay, all right, we got a, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, I see none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Carleen, you're good. You're good to go, all right. So we'll go to eight, C, which is Personnel, Public Safety, and Protection Committee. And I'm going to turn it over to Janice, and she's the chair, she'll take these two, okay?
Thank you. So on occasion, we have folks who apply for an operator's license, where we have additional questions that our typical form can't answer for us, so we ask them to come to the committee and talk through with them those particular situations. In this case, we have our first motion, which is to recommend operator's license, recommend approval for the operator's license applications for Megan Ali and Sandra Yovnis? Is that?
Has a
She said, is there in the committee meeting? I think I should remember, I apologize about that, if I got that wrong. So that is our, that's the first motion we're making.
So somebody want to make a motion in a second, Amanda and Carleen? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Jenna, and Jenna and I have seen the second one before.
Yep. So for the second applicant, they have come before the board previously and have been invited to come to the committee for further discussion. Unfortunately, they have not been able to do that, so at this time, we're recommending a, to deny the operator's license for Tyler Johnson. That is the motion to deny that.
Okay, Derek, a second, can we get a second? Carleen, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to deny operator license to Tyler Johnson? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Jenna, thanks. Nine is unfinished business, items are for discussion, possible action. Nine A is continuing review of draft, chapter one and chapter two of the Village Code and proposed Village Board Handbook. Martin?
All right, I won't belabor this one. I don't think anything too significant has changed since last week. We have the draft, chapter one, and draft, chapter two, and draft handbook in this packet. And it also included a couple of the parallel changes that I talked about last time with moving some of the cemetery language, public records language, and addressing some charter ordinance language as well. So I have some drafts in there. I think this is getting pretty close to being ready for approval. I know there was one outstanding item that trustee Wanche brought up on chapter one, and that was eliminating, was it section 1.03 sub-1 sub-A, number one, which is the options for appointing village officers, and that would just take away, just the option for appointment by the village president. Other than that, is there any questions or anything?
All right, yeah, Phil?
Uh, page ninety. One oh one. B. Persons serving appointed offices shall serve until their respective successors are appointed and qualified. What, what appointed offices are we talking about here?
Sorry, where is that, Phil?
I'm sorry, page ninety of the packet, subchapter one, village officers, one oh one, one B.
Yeah, so for that section of, so that's, yeah, that's wording taken right from that statute sixty-one twenty-three. And unless otherwise, it's specifically stated by ordinance than by law, then anybody serving an appointed office serves until their respective successors are appointed and qualified.
The reason, the reason I bring that up is, I think, as we all know, there's someone serving on a natural resources board right now that won't vacate the office. I hate to think that would happen at this level, but is it necessary for us to have this in here?
It's one of those things where it'll, it'll apply even if it's not in there.
Okay, good.
The only thing, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to address the appointed officer language in chapter one, to remove a lot of appointed officers that aren't necessary, and just to keep statutory officers.
Right.
It's because you can fall into these traps where if something's not addressed, and then somebody can just kind of linger on.
Exactly.
I think that's closed off pretty much everywhere in our Village Code.
Okay.
Because, you know, for example, the village clerk, village treasurer, in our charter ordinance draft language now, it would be at the pleasure of the board. So the board can make that decision at any time. So it's out there, it exists, and we just need to be careful about how we create positions and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Next one conveniently is same page, same number, D. And I'm probably going to feel silly when I hear the answer, but what officers are elected besides village president and trustee in the village?
The judge.
Oh, the judge. Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
All right. Mike? No, really?
I stole this question.
All right. All right, Jenna and Derek.
Um, to go, to stay on that item D that Phil just called out. So our term, a trustee's term starts on May first, but the organizational meeting where there are assigned committees, et cetera, happens two weeks before that? Am I understanding, at the organizational meeting?
It's not including village president and trustee. So village trustees and presidents start, what is it, the third Tuesday? Third Tuesday, I'm going to make a mistake.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, Derek?
Yeah, I just had something kind of pop up this last week, as I am trying to practically apply some of this chapter one and two and reconcile that with what we have on our village website. And I see on there, on our appointment listings, we have the school, Village slash School District Cooperation Committee on there, no appoint, or no need for appointment. Having attended the last school board meeting where the SRO contract was at, I guess I'd like to see maybe it defined in there that, that really, I think, probably what should happen, and I'm open to input on this, is get rid of the Village School District Cooperation Committee and just have it fall under the Public Safety Committee, since it kind of falls under that scope anyways. And then have the Public Safety Committee, because that's an annual contract with the SRO, and it gets reviewed multiple times a year, that I feel that we should have a little bit more formal viewing of that, really.
You lost me.
I'm lost too.
Sure, the Public Safety Committee, page one twenty-one, two point one two, parentheses, one, D two, it just kind of goes into the
Twenty-one. Okay.
Goes into the scope of the Public Safety Committee, and I would like to see within that paragraph added to basically encompass the Village School District Cooperation Committee. And maybe get rid of the wording of that on the appointment list, and just have it fall under that realm, since we don't have anyone appointed to it anyway.
I'm sorry, Derek, but page one twenty-one is part of the
Yeah, it's a little different on here.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I don't know why, but
Can it give us an idea where this might be?
I think it's one sixteen. Okay. Two, maybe?
It's two, you're looking at two point twelve.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's
Two twelve, keep going.
Sub one, D two.
D, two, thank you.
We have two Ds.
Yeah, there's two Ds.
E two, then it would be.
Should be E.
Three D.
Okay. Public safety.
How does it's
Oh, there is two Ds, I guess I'd throw that in as a correction, too.
What's, how does the paragraph start out?
Uh, Public Safety Committee, the committee may review matters related to the following.
Thank you.
Yep.
So you're suggesting adding the school SRO contract to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, an alternative to our appointment on the village website, which has a Village School District Cooperation Committee. I think that should probably fall under the Public Safety Committee, since that already encompasses, you know, the police and has multiple board members on there for input
Okay.
and feedback, as opposed to kind of, it seemed, when the, and when I was at the meeting the other day, the school board had a few representatives, and it was a little bit more formal process than what the village used. I guess I'd just like to see the village kind of fall within that more formalized process as well.
All right, Jenna, and then Candy, once.
So I, the SRO contract under the Public Safety Committee makes sense to me, since it's dealing with our officers. But I feel like school board relations is an entire board thing. So I know in the past, the entire village board has had joint meetings with the entire school board. And I guess I would rather see, because I feel like the school board relationship encompasses more than just the SRO contract. I would like to have, if we have some sort of formalized school board Cooperation Committee, or however we do that, that it happened with the entire board, not just the subcommittee.
And I'm open to, like I said, I'm open to ideas there.
Candy?
And that actually was what I was actually going to ask, like, are you looking for a joint meeting? That's what I'm gathering from this.
Yeah, just a little bit more formalized process to how we're looking at that.
But Jenna, you're saying with the whole board, not just the person, or the public safety.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, with, for the SRO contract specifically, that makes sense with it being, you know, navigating the contract, the details of the contract with the Public Safety Committee and the school board side of things. But for, in general, the relationship with the school board should be the entire village board. And I love the idea of a joint meeting, I know they're complicated to navigate, but we've done them in the past, and I have always appreciated them. So I think that isn't a bad idea.
Okay, yeah, Carleen?
Yeah, I, I agree that the, the relationship between the village board and the school, and the school district is bigger than the SRO contract. And so I'm just thinking right now, we're recommending a DEI contract that is also what the school board is using, and I'm thinking other things, like the school board or school staff used to cover rentals for, for village properties and things like that. And I don't think that's the plan for into the future, but it just, I, I think we can't reduce the relationship with the school district to just that contract. I agree that that contract should go on public safety, but I, I think relationships with school districts are a lot bigger than that.
Okay, yeah, Jenna.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
It's okay, go ahead.
I do like your idea of having more formalized relationship, or way to work through the, navigate the relationship by having like a formalized meeting or something like that, I think that's good, and we should, you know, definitely do that.
Yeah, and if we want to relegate that to just the Public Safety Committee for the SRO contract, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, just because this is a, like a, something that we're hoping will just stand up and, you know, not be so specific, maybe we could say, and, you know, issues relating to school district or safety with the school district, and instead of just naming the SRO contract, but that would fall under school safety issues that overlap with whatever. So changing the, just the wording to include school safety issues, and then the bigger issues with the school district, we can discuss as a full board.
Okay.
And we could do both, because we have to approve the SRO contract as a board, not just as a committee. So we see that anyway. I'm just saying.
All right, yeah, Derek?
And ultimately, if that's how we're going to go forward, that's, sounds good to me. But I would recommend that if we're going to put the, on the village website, the Village School Cooperation Committee, that we maybe list, if we're doing it as a full board, then list the full board on there, as opposed to no need for appointment, because that way the community knows that we, as an entire board, are looking at this.
That's a good idea.
And part of it.
All right. Anybody else on this? Okay, see none. Let's go to nine B, continuing review of draft, twenty twenty-three. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, sorry.
Excuse me, Martin had raised a thing that I had raised last week, is that approved, or? I mean, I
It's up to you, unless there's any other, I can remove it if everybody's good with what you've suggested.
Uh, which part, what are we talking about again?
One point oh three.
That's all I remember, Mike.
Yeah, at the beginning.
I got to get back to one point zero three, subsection one, sub subsection A. So it's removing point one, which is allowing the village president to appoint board members without approval of the village, the village board.
Okay, I'm on the page, one point oh three.
One point oh three.
One A one.
One A one.
Okay.
So the rationale here being that the village president, nothing personal here.
I don't think, we don't do anything different, we always
Right, right.
all approve it anyway.
So just making it the way we do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is just affirming how we're currently doing it, as opposed to allowing an option that we're not using.
Nothing personal.
No, do we?
So our default or our only, I'm sorry.
All right, Amanda, it's up to
I was having side conversations.
Yeah. Yeah, Amanda?
So I, it's a, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what we have to put in here. So, you know, it's pursuant to state statute that the village can select one of three methods. So I'm, what, what you're saying, Mike, is we as a village are not going to choose to use one of those, but, but we can't change the state statute, so I'm questioning whether it has to be in there, just to
It's a self, you know, it's a self-imposed rule.
That is, okay.
So the, the state statute gives the village the, the ability to, an option to appoint under these different methods. And in implementation of that, all the village boards and commissions, I believe, are by village president, subject to village board. I think all the officers are as well, except for the vice president, which is appointed by the collective village board. And then the village board's standing committees are appointed just by the village president. And the standing committees are just committees of village board members.
And if a village trustee stepped down, I would presume it would be appointed by the village president with approval by the village.
No, we do it collectively, Mike. We do, we, we basically interview people, we've done.
Yeah.
And the, and the board decides.
The whole board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So option three.
Okay, we're good? Anybody else? All right.
So, so we're leaving it in, because we use all three of those methods for different purposes.
Well, in this case, in this case, in this chapter, it would apply to boards and commissions and village officers. So you don't commissions and village officers. Um, so you don't, you actually don't use option one in this chapter.
Yeah.
Correct.
Currently.
So the standing committees is a separate?
Standing committees is addressed under chapter two.
Got it, okay. Okay.
All right, we're good? All good?
So I'm, I'm proposing we remove option one because option one, we're not currently doing. I'm just trying to bring this into line with what we're currently doing.
Should we vote on that then?
Or?
There's an objection.
Anybody object to it?
No.
Let's do what we do.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Carleen.
Um, in the, on page eighty-seven of the packet, in the administrative recommendations, there is a reference to term limits. And in my DEI presentation or discussion, I neglected to say that we talked about that in our DEI committee meeting, and we, um, determined that the current policy and the village administrator recommendations is something that we're comfortable with. Our discussion did include recruitment of new committee members as being a bigger concern and making sure that we are being more proactive about that. And I, I know I'm, I mean, that was my report that I didn't give, but I did see that it was in here and wanted to just make sure that you all saw that.
Yep. Okay, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, one last thing. I wanna thank Martin for going through this, because that had got to have been pretty painful and tedious.
It was a, it was a bigger project than I thought it would be.
Yeah. It's good to get it cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, ready to move on? So, Martin, you got what you need?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's do nine B. Let's do continuing review of draft twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two, capital improvement plan. One, one question I asked Martin when I was looking at this, are there any items in that capital improvement plan that, let's just say, have been on the wish list for several years that have not risen to the top? And, and I said, I'm not, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I would like maybe staff to go, and department heads to go back. Is there something that is continually under that we, we haven't funded? I would be interested in looking at that to make sure. Do you guys know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, Amanda?
Um, the, the fixing of Washington Street and State Street, that, that's something that you and I've known about for years, but I understand why we've waited a little bit and now we have grant money to remove lead laterals on those streets, so I'm kinda glad it happened later.
But. Yeah.
But it is still a high priority in my books. I'm glad to see it earlier on this than later.
Yeah. I mean, there might be some, some piece of equipment that's been on this list for three, four years that we haven't gotten to. And I, I guess I'm, I'm just saying that I'd like to know that, we should know that, and maybe that becomes a priority to get that taken care of. That, that's all I'm saying. So it's not something I'm looking for an answer, but there may be some things that we don't know about that we should really sort of take a look at. Yeah. Mike? Oh, I thought you, okay. Does that make sense, everybody, that we, that we have staff kind of do that? Yeah, okay. So that was my comments. Anybody? Anybody? We'll, this is, we'll see this numerous times again, so this is just sort of kind of the beginning. Yeah.
Just one thing, and actually, to your point, Amanda, on, on state and Washington, so what's in the packet right now? Has it, uh, completed in twenty twenty-four? Lauren and Lisa have actually been working on a proposal that will come to you guys on August first for use of the ARPA funds, the remaining ARPA funds, and that would actually push those two projects into twenty twenty-three.
Good.
So that would be, I, I know they're still working on it, but I, I believe that's gonna be their recommendation as to how to use those funds.
And Amanda, to your point, when we had South Main done, I think we thought the next year, I think at one point, it was being looked at, so that, it's good, wasn't it? Or two years? It was.
About two years.
It was, it was shortly after ours, South Main was done.
Yeah, people, neighbors had been waiting a long time for.
There's some, there's some neglected areas, uh, Washington State, um, South Main, and honestly, Dewey, um, it's grossly overdue, um, in some of those areas, but, yeah. And take like South Main, there's, there's bigger issues dealing with stormwater and other things that kind of start to, and, and utilities that kind of start to increase those costs of those projects.
Okay. All right, and Martin, we'll see this again. Continue to see it.
Yeah, there wasn't too much, um, change from the last one since we just met seven days ago. Um, there was a couple of updates to Public Works in the packet. As I mentioned, Lauren and Lisa and Jeff have been working on a recommendation to you all for the use of the ARPA funds. That'll be at the next meeting. And then we just continue to make sure that, um, things are consistent and depicted accurately. Again, I would just say if there's anything, um, that you want to see moved around, the board wants to see moved around, accelerated, decelerated, taken out, put in, um, you know, now's the time to do that. Um, and then again, as we get into August, I would say, start to focus on twenty twenty-three stuff, because that's the stuff that, you know, once we get that direction, we're gonna start moving the organization in that direction to do those projects and make those purchases, um, next year.
Okay.
So any feedback on that would be appreciated.
So, so Martin, it's a, my, my question, we'll have staff sort of look and see if there are some things that maybe we should be aware of. All right, um, Amanda and then Mike.
Yeah, I just, well, I saw the rotary bike trail upgrades in here, and those are for looking at twenty twenty-six. Um, that, that seems unfortunate. There's a lot of people who use that trail and I'm curious.
It's usable. I mean, it's, it's totally open and usable. The, we're, we're held to, uh, we can't just acquire land that people won't sell or give a season to. So that can always depend, move up depending on, uh, whether development occurs, starts to occur and we have a chance to, you know, reroute that portion of the path.
Okay.
Luckily, it's high and dry right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Mike?
Yeah, I unfortunately don't feel qualified to push things out, um, in terms of what the village needs, but I really would like to see staff relook at what's, uh, projected for the next five years and see if there is some of this that we could defer so that we're not doing seventy million dollars of borrowing in the next five years. That's really gonna catch people's attention in a negative way.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
I would agree with Mike's sentiment there. Um, but as I mentioned last meeting, uh, there is one project that I'd like to see moved up, and that's Wolf Street one, if we can, if it's at all practical and we can work with the county on that. I would love to see it.
Wolf Street is, is county, is all county project and, and that's, we have, yes. We'll try.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking.
Do our best. Okay.
He's your rep.
All right.
County eight, done.
Are we good for now?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's go to, um, ten, which is, uh, new business items are for discussion, possible action. Ten A is considered the village's future observation of Juneteenth holiday. And Carleen, we waited just for you to get back because this was something you brought up.
Right, so we met on Juneteenth and, um, it is a federal holiday now and it will likely fall on a meeting date in, every year, uh, because of, uh, June nineteenth being pretty close to the third, third Monday. So I would, um, really like to see us recognize that this is a really important holiday for our black brothers and sisters in terms of when real freedom happened. Don't even get me started on that, but, you know, officially, let's say, freedom happened, uh, to enslave people. And I think that, um, it is one of those things that is not just a nod to the holiday, but shows our support for that holiday and, um, the respect that it deserves.
So, so Carleen, my question, wha- what are you thinking?
I'm thinking that we just don't, we move that meeting just like we do for Fourth of July or whatever, we move that third.
We just don't meet on that day?
Right.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a federal holiday where that Monday will be, everybody will have that Monday off. And so that we, we don't, we don't meet on that Monday, we move it either to the second Monday or the fourth Monday. We just don't, you know.
Okay.
Like we did, did for Fourth of July this, this month.
Okay.
That's my proposal.
So, just a little clear part. So, we, staff does work on that day.
Yes.
Is that, Carleen, is that, are you saying we should not have village staff working?
It's a federal holiday.
Yeah, okay.
We should all.
Just want to have clarification.
It's a federal holiday, yes.
Okay, so that's what you, okay.
That's what I think we should do.
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing that we should do.
All right, I saw Derek's hand, and then Phil.
You actually asked my question.
Okay, all right. So, so what Carleen is proposing is that basically it's, it's a holiday for, well, a holiday for everybody, for all of us, for village staff. We don't work. Nobody works on that day.
Right.
Because right now they.
And our meetings will be.
Our meetings do not.
Are currently scheduled on that third Monday, which is when that like, that holiday is likely to be designated.
Right.
For the foreseeable future. And so if that is the case, then that village board meeting is moved just like the Fourth of July meeting is moved.
All right, Phil?
I'm not clear. Um, is, is the entirety of your proposal that we do not meet on that, that day?
My, the entirety of my proposal is that it's a federal holiday, that we give that federal holiday to staff and that we do not meet. If, if it, if our third Monday meeting falls on the Juneteenth hol- federal holiday, that we're not meeting as we did Fourth of July, and we met the second Monday instead of the first Monday.
So essentially, the village is closed.
It's a federal holiday.
Right.
Yeah. Federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday.
Okay, yeah, Amanda and Derek.
So what's our current policy regarding staff working? Are we recognizing that already or what, where are we?
We work, like, we're.
We work, we're open.
Normal work.
So it would be a new, it would be a new holiday for staff then?
It would be a paid holiday. What about like library and senior center, everything closed then?
The library follows the village's paid holidays, so whatever you choose for the village, the library would follow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so Derek, and then I saw Jenna's hand.
A couple of questions. I'm assuming if, uh, we go this route, that this is gonna be included in the compensation study that we're doing. And I guess my next question would be is how would this affect like the police department budget and how they get paid?
The overtime?
Well.
Yeah.
It's, it's built in anyways. I mean, whether we work it or not, we're, we're getting paid, so it's part of everybody's salary. Um, so I don't, it wouldn't have a budgetary impact in that regard. Um, the only thing that we would need to think about is the union contract. It's not currently recognized, um, but it is a discussion point we can have with, with the union.
All right, Jenna, and then Carleen.
So, um, in your comments, you mentioned, um, because it's a federal holiday, are you looking for this treatment for all federal holidays or just a specific?
I was gonna, that was gonna be my question. Is there any federal holiday, other federal holiday that the staff works or when we meet?
I was gonna mention, because this actually came up with MLK Day. We, we met on that Monday in January. And I remember there was a couple of questions about it as well, so that would be another potential one as well.
We work Veterans Day, we work Columbus Day.
Yeah, we work.
We work Presidents' Day.
Yeah.
National Donut Day.
That is not a federal holiday.
That is.
Not yet.
Yeah.
So I guess my feeling on this is that there are some holidays that, like MLK Day is another day that I would say that we should be closed. And it, um, I don't, I, I have some pretty strong feelings about, um, actually recognizing by our actions, and that would be our actions, the contributions of BIPOC people to this country. Um, and so I think that it's a step in that direction to acknowledge and encourage staff and board members to do something affiliated with that. But the first step would be to acknowledge it as a federal holiday and, and give staff that day off as a holiday and to not meet as a board. And I would say the same thing for MLK Day.
Okay. Jenna, did, oh, okay. Yeah, Phil?
Do we, do we know of other municipalities, what their policy are on this? Anyone familiar with that?
Well, I think, I, Madison does Juneteenth in Dean County.
Dean County.
And so they're, they're.
They're presidents, yes.
And, and they're, they're closed, their county offices and city offices are closed on those days?
It's definitely becoming more and more.
Yeah.
It's a trend.
Yeah.
Well, it's only been a federal holiday for two years.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, Rachel, you got a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I know with MLK Day, I think we are one of only two of the many senior centers in the county who are open on that day.
Mm-hmm.
But for like Veterans Day, we're working, we have events that happen at the senior center, but it is a federal holiday, so.
Yeah, Amanda?
To compensate for this, I, I would suggest that we do not celebrate Columbus Day for obvious reasons. Let's like work that day and, you know, I'm totally fine with that. Just.
Well, and there, there, we do, the village does recognize a couple of holidays for staff that aren't federally recognized, like the day after Thanksgiving Day is, we have off, but it's not a federal holiday. Um, Christmas Eve, we have off, I believe, as well. And then, uh, but that's not a how federal, federal holiday. So there is some give and take that way.
So should we, should we have staff like sort of compile a list before we, so we, so we have everything in front of us before we vote? Or what do we want to do? Yeah, Mike?
I would kind of like to keep this discussion to Juneteenth and MLK at this point, as opposed to opening up a can of worms.
And we can have further discussion.
At some point, there is enough of a staffing impact that we're looking at, I would staff to, to cover for days off. Or, and I question, if we have staff working holidays, is that time and a half? No?
No, I don't think so. Is it, how does it work for Public Works?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a time and a half. What, I mean, the only people we have to call in is our wastewater people on a regular basis for, for testing, um, and, and stuff like that. But yeah, it would be time and a half on a holiday.
Libraries.
You would assume the police department would give us that money?
Yeah.
Library staff gets regular time on holidays. Um, we usually have somebody go in to check book drops and empty that, so it doesn't jam.
So, yeah, to Derek's point, there would be some, at least some holiday pay, um, budgetary impact. Uh, not substantial, but at least some.
All right, so what do we want to do? Do you want to?
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amanda?
I, I think Juneteenth is a really important holiday, uh, for BIPOC people and it is the, the declared day of freedom from slavery, you know, when the last slaves were freed in, sorry, thank you, the last, this enslaved people, uh, were freed. Um, and that's a big deal for a lot of reasons. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable making a decision on that day today, but, and saying, let's make it a, a federal holiday where people, I mean, not make it, let's recognize the federal holiday and ha- give staff day off, uh, and not meet on those days, uh, when it falls on a Monday or whatever. Um, I think though that this is part of a larger discussion, that we're gonna need to look at those other holidays. So I think that should be a, maybe a future agenda item where we look at budgetary impacts of other holidays. I don't, I don't think we should make a decision on MLK Day just because that hasn't been noticed. We're talking about Juneteenth, that's what's in the packet, but I, that's another date we would want to look at. Uh, for example, we can have a larger discussion at another time.
Okay.
So I'd say, you don't want to make a decision tonight. Um, we should. We should, so our holidays are listed in our play handbook. So we shouldn't have a formal amendment come back to you guys, a resolution that you guys can vote on. So if the direction is just Juneteenth, we can draft up a resolution and make the changes, some draft changes to the handbook, make sure we get it addressed anywhere else it needs to get addressed in writing, and then bring it back for formal approval.
Okay, sound fair? So we'll see Juneteenth at our next meeting, the resolution, and then we can have further discussion on the other, other day. Derek? No? You okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, does it sound, sound fair? Yeah.
So I wonder if this is one of those things that the DEI committee should actually discuss those further things? Because this is just something I said on the day that we were meeting. But it does seem like something that would be appropriate for the DEI committee to discuss and maybe make some recommendations for ways that the board and the village could actually recognize things like, like Juneteenth and MLK Day and Veterans Day. I mean, I think that, um-
So do you want the committee to discuss first before?
I would like to move forward with the Juneteenth, but I'm wondering about the other days.
The other ones, have a discussion.
But it's, it's a wondering, it's not a request to give us that. It's just a wondering.
Yeah, the board, the board can refer it to the committee if it wants to.
Yeah, yeah, Derek?
Given just the timeline of this and the fact that the next Juneteenth is a year out, I guess I'd be more inclined to have the DEI committee discuss it first and then maybe get the budget impact from staff before we just go ahead and pass a resolution, you know, at our next meeting or the following meeting, just to get a little bit more information on it before we pass it because, like I say, it is still pretty much a full year out, the, the next one.
All right, Carleen, you okay with that? Take it to the committee?
I would very much like for us to have real conversations about these things.
Okay. All right, so the DEI committee will discuss Juneteenth and other potential and then bring back a, a recommendation to us. Okay. Sound good? Okay. All right, we'll go to ten B, future agenda items. Item gives board members the opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anyone? Yeah, Phil?
As most people have noticed and maybe have gotten some emails or calls, there's been a lot of discussion about the North Main Lot of late. Part of that is a clear, uh, lack of information about what the village's investment in that property would be, is. And so I'd like to propose that we have a, a breakdown of that, what we invested in that property and what the cost would be if we paid the loan, the outstanding loan to term. It wouldn't necessarily be a discussion item, but I would like it to be on the village board agendas.
Just wanted like a report.
Yeah, I, yeah, just, a spreadsheet will work essentially, just so we can see the totals.
All right.
I'm sorry, did you say two four nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, proposed library site, another way to put it.
Okay, anybody else? All right, see none. We're on to eleven. Adjournment? You get a motion in a second? Amanda and Carleen on favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.